Meeting of Willett City Council order for August 26th. Can we all rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got through that. Let's try the roll.
Councillor Mistranski?
Yes.
Stott?
Yes.
Wornstein?
Here.
So, last meeting, I got off track to start with, never quite got back on, so I'm going to try and pay a little more attention to my city manager tonight. We need to add one item to the agenda, correct?
That's correct.
Can we do that? How can we get a four-fifths vote with? Well, we can, conceivably we can.
Yeah.
Everybody step and fetch it here. So we have an item 14B in closed session as a conference with legal counsel pursuant to code 54956.9B, anticipated litigation, exposure to litigation. We always hate to see these things come on the agenda.
It's two cases, actually.
Okay. I'm only seeing, it's under one item?
It's anticipated litigation, two items.
Okay. Well, it's only...
I think normally, I guess we didn't catch, she would disclose whether it's one case or two cases, and I guess I didn't.
Okay. Well, let's see if we can get a four-fifths vote to add that to the agenda.
I'll move to second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councillor Mistranski?
Yes.
Stott?
Yes.
Wornstein?
Yes.
So, public communications, do we have any public communications this evening, items that are not on the agenda, no action will be taken? And please limit your comments to...
Two minutes?
Thirteen seconds for you.
I just wanted to thank Rod's division and Jeremy. We got a job really well done on Humboldt Street.
Do you live in the neighborhood of Humboldt Street, sir?
Yes, I do. My wife does, too. But anyway, it was a great job. They hired local contractors on some of their work. Dave Slater did the concrete work, and Bud Garman was there with his truck. But it was really nice to have that happen, and the job really went well for us. Appreciate the contractors, and you got it.
Thank you, Victor.
Jeremy, particularly, I appreciate it.
Good. We're pretty proud of that project.
Yeah.
Any other public communications? You know, I'd like to pose public communications, and we had a lost a really great guy in town last week, high school ag teacher for thirty-some-odd years, and a really, really good friend of mine, so. Greg Randrop, if you've been around Willett High, he's kind of Larry's right-hand guy. Larry was his mentor, and they shared a common wall in adjoining classrooms forever. But I'd like to just take about a minute or so to...
I would like to say that the community, and my feeling, they lost a very nice gentleman. I never heard anything negative about him, and the kids loved him. I mean, it was just, they just were really, I've had people come in the store today still, and our stillness can't believe it. Anyhow, I agree, Bruce, we lost a really nice man.
We did. So just give us a little bit to remember, Greg. And there will be, as I read in the paper this evening, there will be memorial service for him at the rodeo grounds Saturday at five o'clock. Okay. Our next item on the agenda, I believe, is a presentation by Mark Ferguson here from representing our insurance group, and...
It's self-insured.
Pool, exactly.
So you're not an insurance salesman?
Come on up and tell us what's in store.
How are we going to do that?
You want to hand me the mouse?
You're going to use the...
Yeah, that's me.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll move out of the way, and you can sit at that chair right there. You probably need the microphone.
I'm fine. I think better standing, actually.
Okay.
So, my name is Mark Ferguson. I'm the general manager of REMIF. REMIF is a program that you're involved in, and today we're going to talk a little bit who we are, what we do, and how we're doing it. So, maybe we'll do this, and maybe we won't. Okay. I am not IT. I never said I was IT.
Try it now.
You want me to just sit there and punch you?
Try it.
Mark, the ball on it, just roll it on the mouse.
The middle ball.
How'd you do that?
Just turn it down.
Down. Oh, okay, we'll try this. Elena, you want to do this for me? Because otherwise, we'll play round the ball all night long. Yeah.
This is Elena Pizzi. She's my workers' compensation claims manager. I've been with the organization, just roll it down, for a little over fourteen years. Elena's been there longer than I have. Okay. We were established in 1976. We have fifteen city members, they're all cities, from five counties. We're self-insured. You're going to hear me say that about six times in this presentation. We're not insurance. We buy insurance over the top of what we do, but we are a pool. Purpose of a pool is, we collect money from fifteen members to pay claims. In the world of claims, you generally have six good years, and one mediocre year, and three bad years. And if you can share that with fifteen members, you're generally doing fine. So that's why you're in a pool. We cover liability, general auto, workers' comp, health care, and we have other programs to talk about a little bit. Who are we? Well, we go from Arcata all the way down to City Sonoma. We started with original members. Now, we're up to fifteen, and everybody, what we have done recently, which Adrian has helped us on, we have now, every member on this group has a voting member on our board. It used to be only nine. We have expanded it with approval of all our cities. Every member has equal rights to it. Our office is actually in City Sonoma. We have ten people total in our office. So you've got twenty percent of our office right here. Next. We're part of a bigger pool, and there's a reason for that, is that we have a certain amount of assets we can put aside. We join a bigger pool, which is one hundred and twenty-two cities, primarily in Northern California. And we do that for a couple of reasons. One is, one hundred and twenty-two cities do the insurance claims the same way. We handle permits the same way. We handle construction, contracts, all pretty much the same way. So, and we feel we do it with attorney's background, we do it the right way. So when somebody comes to your city and says, "You do it differently in Willetts," because no one else does that, my comment is, "One hundred and twenty-two cities in this region do it the same way. Tell me how we're doing it different." And that comment tends to go away. That's why we're part of a bigger pool, so we can all do the things the same way. This is why we're self-insured. This came out in March of 1986, Time Magazine, "America: Your Insurance is Cuts." And I will tell you, in public service, workers' comp, we could pull back in the seventies, but liability was insured up through the early eighties, and all the insurance companies we were working with walked away from us. Cities were bad risks. You add, "Oh, police, oh, fire, oh, Public Works." They do things that hurt, damage, or destroy things. We're walking away. You're too expensive. This is why we're self-insured. One of our programs, the most recent one we got in place, and which I'm kind of really proud of right now, we've gone self-insured for our health care. And I don't know how much the council knows about this, but I'll give you a quick history. Our broker came to us two years ago and said, "There's major changes in the health market. You better be in front of the wave and not behind it." We were insuring through Aethon Blue Cross, and of our total number of people in our program, we were paying, last year we paid seventeen point six million dollars in health care costs for our fifteen cities. We went to them and said, "What will you charge us this coming year?" And their comment was, "We'll cut you a break, we'll only raise it nine percent." Okay? We saw this coming, talking with our brokers, we looked into self-insurance, we had actuarials done, we put a program together literally in a year. And people are saying, "Well, why did you do that?" Well, if you're insured, you really don't know, for health care, you really don't know where your dollars are going. They won't tell you. Your insurance companies will not tell you how your dollars are being spent. But we did some research and found that our cost for claims payment for medical was around eleven million a year. And they had some auxiliaries in there, so it's probably up to about twelve million a year we had in claims. They were going to charge us this coming year eighteen point four million dollars. It doesn't take long to figure out that they're making a thirty-five percent overhead profit on you, on all of us. So we went to the board, the board said, "Make it work." We put our program together, started July 1. Our estimated cost for the first month, yes, it's really early, we believe that our total claims costs, including overhead and excess insurance if we have a bad claim, and our drug valuation company and our pharmacy company told cost you to run somewhere a little less than thirteen million for the first year. That's what our estimate is. So, it's clear why we're doing this. We can write some plans that you guys can choose or not choose to give your employees, better plans, craft less costly plans, we can stabilize our premium. The boards agreed to, the premium we paid in 2014 will be the most you'll pay for the next three years, with the hope that we'll actually, in the second year, be able to give you a reduction in your premium. How often have you heard that about your health care in the last fifteen to twenty years? Being that we didn't know where our health care dollars were being paid, we had wellness programs, but we don't know how effective they were, if they're pinpointing those that were in the most need. Being self-insured, we'll know where the claims are, we'll know where our cost factors are, and we'll go out and find those wellness programs that best meet the needs of our employees. We have some ideas, but with this, we think we can buy great wellness programs and perhaps reduce our costs even more. For every hundred thousand dollars you may pay in wellness, you may get a three hundred thousand dollar reduction in actual claims costs. So it's very important to look at this sort of stuff. Plus, it's really good for your employees. The way we're funding this is based on actuarial studies. We're going to actually have a, we've had two actuarial studies before the program was put in place. The next one will be sometime after the first of the year, at which point in time we'll be looking at that point and seeing if our program's fully funded, and we can look at whatever we may need to do, either to reduce next year's premium or look at wellness programs. So we'll have that done by actuarial. It won't be Mark Ferguson saying, "Gee, I think we should have this level." So you have some confidence there. What are some of our other programs we deal with? I personally handle the claims for auto, general liability, and property. It comes through me personally. I have myself and one other person in the office that handles that. Ellen handles all the other workers' comp. We have, each member has a deductible per claim, between five thousand and twenty-five thousand. We self-insure all our programs to five hundred thousand. We go through our excess pool that I talked about earlier to five million, and then we buy excess over the top of that to forty million. I will tell you right now, forty million is about the low end of where we should be. If you've been reading the papers in the last couple of years, you've seen cities hit with forty-eight million dollars in losses. Forty-two million dollars in one of the cities down south, okay? I think that forty million's going to have to go up because claims costs, these awards are going up. But right now, we're at forty million dollars. Our work comp program, we're very proud of our work comp program. You pay five thousand dollars per claim, REMIF picks up to a million dollars in any claim over the top of your deductible, and then we have to go out and we purchase excess insurance for any claim over a million. And we have seven?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have seven total claims over a million dollars in our program. I will tell you that we were audited by the state twice in the last six years, at which point in time, we were ranked either number one in the state or in the top ten in the state in claims handling by the state. So we're really proud of that. So how do we fund our programs? Well, we do it by actuarial studies. Every year, we have an actuarial done. They look at all our programs. They tell us what they estimate the cost of it is. We take what's called a seventy-five percent confidence factor, which means seventy-five percent of the time, they're going to be right. Then we throw a million dollars excess over the top of that. If we have catastrophic claims that do not reach our excess, we have this cushion so that we don't go back and assess our members any additional claims cost. That's why we have it there. That's been in place for twenty years. Interesting last line, how many of you have insurance where they give you refunds if you don't have losses? We give refunds.
Used to.
Used to?
Yeah.
Maybe, if you're really lucky. I see on TV, so, like, all states says they might. But they may be overcharging you, too. Next slide. In the last seventeen years, we've given eighteen million dollars back to our members in liability, seven point seven million dollars in our workers' compensation program. Specifically, you've gotten, what we charge you, we've given back one point one million dollars, or sixty-one percent of your premium on liability has been given back in the last seventeen years. Not so much the last couple of years, because you've had some fun losses, but over the last several years, you've gotten sixty-one percent.
What's this for Craig?
Because I missed it when I made the thing. I'm sorry. But this is your numbers, because they weren't that good.
It does say Willett Street. Title at the top.
I am sorry. When you do enough of these, mine kind of goes crazy sometimes. But you do get refunds. What are some of the other programs we at REMIF deal with? We have property insurance. We have three hundred million dollars of coverage for property. So if that major fire hits in your area and your city buildings are burned, we have up to three hundred million dollars to help what we can to take care of that. We have coverage called boiler and machinery, which your Public Works people love. That's if a machine breaks, not wears out, but like hits by lightning or destroyed somehow. We, there's like a five thousand dollar deductible, and you get a replacement cost on that. So that's a great program. We have auto physical damage, that's up to five thousand dollars. We have employee dishonesty funds. Your city clerk loves that we have that, because that's a requirement of all cities to have it, so we buy it for you as a group. We have earthquake and flood. Talk about that a little bit, in that we are in an earthquake zone for all my cities. I have twenty million dollars in coverage for earthquake. It cost me a million bucks to buy that per year. The reason we buy that is there's a little group called FEMA out there, and that's federal, who are supposed to take care of disasters. Well, they take care of a lot of disasters, up to the point, recently, they have said, "Public agencies, if you don't go out and try to find insurance or show coverage, we may fail to refund any of your losses." We have talked to FEMA. If we have a major earthquake or flood, twenty million dollars if we have it hit more than one city is not going to cover us. But FEMA has indicated that since that's the most we can afford, that's sufficient to toll their program, so they'll step in and pay directly the difference. But if you work with FEMA, that's another, I'm not FEMA. But the issue kind of is, we got this, it's costing us a lot of money, it's a stopgap, so you have coverage from the federal government. That's why we do it. We bought pollution insurance a couple of years ago. That's, we, it starts at a hundred thousand dollars, but I don't know if you've dealt with a pollution insurance, or, excuse me, a pollution problem. One is, if you have pollution, the people who make money are the lawyers. And our coverage picks up a hundred percent of the lawyer's costs. Okay? It's, I believe the policy's at twenty million dollars for help cleanup. If you're dealing with mills and other kind of areas that have cleanup problems, twenty million is not very much to protect. But it protects you a hundred percent for the attorneys. We had a claim, not, it was in our, not in our program, but another city, they were sued and let or left out, three and a half million dollars in attorney's fees were paid, and they didn't pay a dime for cleanup. They were let out of the lawsuit. But three million dollars later. That's why we have that.
That doesn't apply to citizen suits, like another clean water...
No. It also doesn't cover finer penalties from our friends at the state water resource board. I cannot cover that. So if you pollute, I can help clean it up, but I can't pay for them coming in and finding you. The new one we just got is cyber coverage. Do you guys deal with water bills, or electrical bills, or any bills like that?
Yes.
Uh-huh. Do you have any identifiable information in your computer on anybody, house name, social security number, or anything like that? This covers you if you get hacked. This is a million-dollar policy. We kind of thought, "Why would we need this?" Is anybody working in federal government? One of my, one of my people in my office, her husband works in the federal government, his social security number is now somewhere in China or Asia. They got hacked, and it's a big problem. This policy helps protect you, but also if your customers get in trouble, it sets up credit, evaluation lines, things like that. If you've heard about Target's problem, this covers everything that Target had problems with. So this is brand-new to us. You'll get a questionnaire next week and be filled out. Subrogation is, if somebody damages you, we go after them to recover. If we paid some money out, we go after them to recover. We recovered, I think, last year about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's, that's given right back to you guys in reviews premium, because we do that. So that's what subrogation's all about.
What is the employee dishonesty?
Well, say you, your...
Short version.
Short version, if one of your employees steals money from your treasury, or wires something incorrectly, or does something bad...
Fraudulently.
Fraudulently, we recoup the cost of whatever dollars stolen. And then, in reality, we go after the employee for recovery. Of course, if they're in jail, that's another story. But this is also required, but by the state for all clerks, because it just is. I don't know why it just is. You can tell me that. Anyway, next. Non-casualty, we talked about health care. We also have a dental, self-insured dental plan, self-insured vision plan. We also have life and disability insurance that we help set up for you. That may be changing in the next few years with the changes with our health care. We're going to look at more of that, and what may be better, cost-effective. That's one of the programs I'm looking at. We have an employee assistive program. This is if your employee needs some counseling for a lot of different reasons. We pay, I think it's up to six visits. Your employees use it. We are told the usage rate for our program is one hundred and twenty-five percent of normal. So our employees are using this program. They're getting counseling, it's free to them, it could be, well, whatever. There's a lot of problems that we can do, but we, it's part of our program. Another thing we do is, we do a lot of training. Our feeling is, if we can avoid accidents or injuries, it's going to save money in the long run. We have a new safety consultant onboard. I believe he's been out here in meeting with you and helping set up, looking at your IIPPs and things like that. We're looking at safety, we're setting up all sorts of stuff through your Public Works, trenching, closed space training, and stuff like that, and we're paying for all that kind of training now. We also pay your employees to go to the statewide conferences. And I'll give you a quick, Kajapa is California Joint, or California Joint Powers Association. They have a three-day conference for all the members of the state go to it. Parma is Public Employees Risk Management. They have a three-day conference. So your employees get to go and meet a hundred, two hundred, three hundred other agencies, and they get three days of discussion and lecture, and you can hear what's going on, what's in the industry, what you may be doing different than others. That's why we send people there. CalPRA is California Public Employees Labor...
Relations.
Okay. We pay for that, too. That's a good one, because I will tell you right off, in my opinion, for liability, the place I'm most scared is employment. You've got high exposure in employment cases, they cost a lot of money to litigate. I'm averaging on cases I get, they're running me a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in litigation on employment issues. That could be wrongful termination, it could be discrimination. Those are expensive. And the problem is, you have attorneys that are very precise, know what all the laws are, and I will tell you, none of my cities know all the laws. We help send people there, where they can learn some of them. That's why we send that. We also have other training programs that we're setting up. We're trying to, we set up consortiums throughout the state, or throughout our areas, so you can have training for your Public Works, and your HR, and your personnel. Why are we here? Risk transfer. That's a big one. That's one your city and I have a lot of discussions about. That's when contractors, you want to have a contractor do some work for you, but he doesn't want to take any of the risk or responsibility for doing the work, and if something breaks, he doesn't want to pay for it. Risk transfer is, they will have insurance before they start the job, and they have to have adequate insurance, because if they don't, they'll get sued. If they don't have insurance, you're going to get sued right after. So that's why we want to transfer risk. We also have all sorts of consortiums, one for the police department, one for personnel. We have a, we have a program that helps set up pre-employment fiscals throughout the state and help with your job analysis, analysis. And we also have a DOT drug and alcohol program, where, because we can pull it together... And we also have a DOT drug and alcohol program, where, because we can pull it together, it costs a lot, you a lot less to have it as a group, plus it, it, your employees are in a bigger group, so when they're, it's less likely that they're actually picked, because each one of these are very expensive if you have it. You guys, I'm sure you have heavy, heavy equipment, that meets the requirement for this. If you had to go out and get your own testing, it's hundreds, if not thousands of dollars. So we set it up. Okay. Where we been the last two years? Again, we now have a 15 member board where you all have the same equal rights to vote. We're self insured for health. We have a safety consultant online, and now we have cyber coverage. We are, I'm going to say this, we try to be really progressive. Again, you heard me say it earlier, we want to be in front of the wave and not behind the wave. So we're always looking for new things that we can do to make the program better. I have a really good board of 15 members who realize this, and they're very, as a group, I will tell you, that's a nasty flag. As a group, they look at everybody before they look at themselves. And I'm really proud of that. I rarely, if ever, have had a, a member come up and say, "I think this is good, but I'm not going to vote because it's not good for my city." I've never had that, or I've never heard that. And so, it's, it's the best for the whole program. And that's a little bit longer than I want to go, but that's my, any questions? I'm sorry, I kind of shotgun this stuff through.
That's good. We'll get people back up here and see if we have any questions from the council.
I'm sorry, I had to support brag on that one.
We have, that's all right.
You're friends, aren't we?
Yeah.
Long as we're 30 miles apart.
Do, do we have any questions up here from the council?
Yes, sir.
The fees, the, what do you call it, the premiums? How are they allocated among the members?
It's based on two things. It's based on loss history, going back either five or 10 years, depending on the program, and payroll. The payroll is used because it gives the smaller agencies the same level as big agencies. And so we use that as a smoothly agent.
So when you talked about the rebates, you know, when you have excess money, how is that determined? The same formula?
Well, we look at losses. So it's based on your performance for the last few years, or five years. And if, if your loss ratio is greater than 100, which means worse than it should be, no refund. If it's less than that, it depends on where it is from, and our bottom line is 75. Between 175, where you fall in, you'll get your percentage of the refund based on your loss ratios.
So we can be proactive in determining how much we pay and how much we get back by being very careful and
Always.
mindful of that.
Always.
Good, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for, do we have any questions from the community?
I just want to say, since you're here and Elena's here, REMH has just been a tremendous resource for the city. You know, certainly predates me, but since I've been here for nearly six years, they're very approachable, very easy to talk with and work through, whatever issues or questions we have, or just a need to understand a situation better. And we, we've enjoyed the relationship very much, and certainly the, the resource that you've provided us over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for coming up and giving us an update this evening.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure. Have a, have a safe drive home.
Just don't drive.
Can you pull it out?
Oh.
Where are you?
Well, there it is.
Oh my God. That cost $1,000.
Oh.
I witnessed it. That's covered under cyber.
So we're pulling all the consent calendars tonight, right? So we have some informational reports, but rights to appeal. Persons who are dissatisfied with decisions of the city council may have a right of review of that decision by court. City's adopted 1094.6, the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits 90 days, the time within decisions that boards, agencies may be challenged. We're going to move right along to city managers' reports and recommendations, I think.
Yes.
And what's, what do you got?
First, I'll start with some verbal reports. And just to segue on REMH's presentation and reference to the training they provide, we are having such a, one such training next Wednesday, September 2nd, through the Leeburg Cassidy Law Firm Legal Consortium. And we have two sessions that day, one in the morning that's geared more for management staff, and then one in the afternoon that's geared for really all city employees. And it's all about what it is, what it means to be a public entity employee, and all that that entails. So I, I think this is an important topic for all of our employees, and I would like to close City Hall that afternoon, so that all employees may attend that training, which will be hosted here in the community center. So I'm, I'm looking for a blessing, if you will, to close City Hall from noon to 5:00 PM.
What date?
Wednesday, September 2nd, next Wednesday. So if anybody has any
Do we need to take action?
I, I don't think so. If there's any objections, you know what I mean? Let's see, John's Place Appeal, I reported at the last meeting that that was noticed for September 9th. And I was informed that two, two of you will not be present for that meeting, so we inform the applicants of that. Essentially, they have the right to go forward at that meeting as noticed, or to have it continued to another meeting. And we were recommending that it be continued to the September 23rd meeting, where we would open the hearing at the 9th, at the meeting on the 9th, and then continue it to the 23rd. I was just informed this afternoon that the applicants actually desire to proceed with the hearing on the 9th. So it's their prerogative, and that's their desire at this point in time. The pool season officially ended last Saturday, and we had a very good season. I think we kind of got off to a little bit, a bumpy start with just trying to get everything in place, but it was a good season. Great staff, most of whom were returning from last year. I stopped by Saturday afternoon to chat with them, and the new lifeguards, I was told that they just, great training, great response from them, and they're very enthusiastic about returning next year. So I'm, I'm proud of the staff, pool staff. Airport Day is going to be held on Sunday, September 13th, from 10:00 to 4:00. And that's been planned for a while, I think I've previously reported on that. But since our last council meeting, we received notice that the ribbon cutting for the new hospital is also going to be held on the same day. That's scheduled from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. So, I mean, both are doable, but just a heads up about that. Let's see, John Sherman is our, our building officials, also our floodplain administrator. And he reported recently that he'll be attending a training back east, the end of September. But we're trying to put together a meeting with all of our stakeholders regarding preparations for this coming wet season, which we're told will be hitting us earlier, actually in September. Yes, that's the latest
And more severely.
report on that.
Potentially.
Let's see. And sticking with the topic of the code enforcement, there's been some recent sort of uprising in the community about an increase in code enforcement activities. I don't believe that there's been an increase in code enforcement activities, but perhaps it's getting, getting some attention lately because of the nature of our code enforcement. And so I just wanted to clarify for everyone that staff is tasked with enforcing the existing municipal code. Our code enforcement program is complaint driven, not unlike our police department. Somebody calls in with a complaint, and we have a duty to look into the matter and see if any further measures are warranted. In some cases, they are, and in some cases, they are not. So until, if and when, rather, there are amendments to the code, which do happen from time to time, and that's under the city council's purview. It's staff's duty to enforce our existing code. And it's, it's a pretty straightforward program. Let's see, yesterday morning, we had a visit from the state water board officials. Officials from the state water board is a better way to put that. They came because
These were the good guys.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. This wasn't a result of any issue we were having. Senator McGuire has been a strong advocate for the city will its, for us to, you know, continue to, to seek funding for various water related projects, especially with the drought. And so, a couple of months back, we went to Sacramento at his invitation, where we met with some folks from the state water board. Those were, I, from the financing division, and I think we reported that, that, that meeting wasn't necessarily very encouraging. We found that because we still have water, and we still have money, because we managed our resources pretty well, that we weren't inclined to get additional funding. But Senator McGuire has persisted, and so yesterday, we, we hosted, I think, three visitors from out of the area. And Chief, Fire Chief McGann was there, John Sherman, our building official, myself, Mayor Burton, and anyway, so we
Rod.
Rod, our public works director. So we went out to, after meeting here for a bit, we went out to the groundwater treatment plant, and showed, showed that off to them, and then out to the Elias well. And then we went over to Main Street and drove that stretch that, and that's really such a huge priority right now, and we really emphasize that to them. I think the meeting was productive. They didn't write us a check at the end of it, we weren't expecting that they would, but it was a very good meeting in terms of clarifying what their process is, the transitions they've been going in, moving really from more of a regulation based program to a policy based program. And they were very encouraging with us about the feasibility of several projects that we have that, that may get funding. So we are planning to submit, it's a, basically a one stop application process here in the very near future, that would be considered for a number of different projects with a number of different funding sources. So we'll keep you posted on that end. And then lastly, we're going through some technology upgrades, citywide, and so that process is just getting underway with Minnesota County IS Division. And we're, we're pretty excited about that. We think that we're going to end up with a, a much better technology system and support services, and one that really puts all of the city departments on the same network. And so anyway, we'll keep you posted on that end as well. That process will take probably about three months or so. That's what I have, that's it for verbal reports.
For verbal reports. And then we have an informational report on those regarding the city's use of herbicides.
Right. So this is in response to Council River Strong's request for us to review the city's use of herbicides. So staff has put together a memo that's attached to the agenda summary, that really talks about the city's wetland mitigation plan, because that's really the predominant area where herbicides called to be used. And so it addresses alternatives to herbicide use. I'm going to ask that Rod come up and be available to address this. Essentially, what we're looking for tonight is direction from the council regarding next steps in this matter. Our wetlands mitigation plan was adopted in 2009, and that went through a vetting process with our regulatory agencies. And we believe that any material change to that plan would require a similar vetting process through those same agencies. So what we're proposing, short of that, would be a staff level practice to utilize mechanical and manual methods for weed abatement, wherever it's practical to do so. The memo does get into what the implications are, if we rely on that solely, and, and the, the cost and possible complications with doing that. We're in year three of our five year monitoring plan, and so there, there's some concern about going in a different direction essentially, that would, could compromise our, our monitoring plan, and put us in a position to have to start over with a five year plan. But again, I'd like to have Rod, and I don't know if there's anyone else, staff wise, that would like to elaborate on this.
Rod, do you have a second?
Adrian pretty much explained everything. But at this point, given recent, some recent, I would say some recent changes in, in direction locally, we've, we've decided to explore other methods of weed abatement on our mitigation wetlands. But at the end of the day, we are required to meet the mandates as set forth in our mitigation plan. And we would like, that's, well, I wouldn't say we would like, but we may at some point in the future have to come back to council and talk about using herbicides once again. We have some, we've talked about using goats, and we've talked about some other ways of manually, manual removal of blackberries and bull thistles, et cetera. But it is labor intensive. I think one of the things that is unique for us is that we have the Chamberlain Creek crew that we can call on, which is, they, they do, they do good work, and they're very efficient. And I would say that that's, that's where we're at right now. I don't know, in light of Caltrans decision, we've, I've spoken with Caltrans mitigation contractor about what they propose to do, and we just plan to follow suit.
So you see this as having a, a, causing change orders in our mitigation contracts?
I don't think so. And I spoke to Adrian earlier about any cost increase, et cetera, and we really don't know until we go through, go through a cycle, a year of weed removal. And, you know, we might find that it's, it's too costly, and we may find that it's too demanding on staff resources, et cetera. We may have to look to go a different direction, but
Are these, are these duties now being performed by in-house staff, or are they done by contractors?
It's kind of, it's a mix right now. We, we use the Chamberlain Creek crew a lot for the actual removal, and as it states in the, in the memo in the past, Restoration Resources has brought a licensed herbicide person out to, to use herbicide on a limited, herbicides on a limited basis. I mean, that's the best way to describe it. I don't, I don't, I don't foresee significant cost increase annually. The potential The potential is that, that we could have to extend this beyond two more years. So that's the risk we run and I shouldn't say the risk we run because we will not, we won't let, we won't fail in our mitigation effort, is the best way I've been describing. We'll find a way to make it work. Rod?
Yeah, so you're referring to the five-year mitigation plan?
Right.
But the fact is that after the five years is up, these weeds and things, they're going to come back. So there will need to be, I mean, I assume it's not the intention to just let them grow wild, is it?
I can't answer that question. I don't, I don't know what, I honestly don't know what our requirement is beyond, beyond the five years.
Well, I'm thinking, well, the mitigation has to do with, as I understand, planting trees and shrubs and things like that to recreate a wetland environment. And once they're established, then they're established. But in addition to that, you're still going to have all the weeds and blackberries and things that are going to do their thing as well. And, you know, lived here long enough, you live, you leave your blackberries alone, they have a way of coming back. So I guess my question is that this isn't about the mitigation, this is about what we want happening out at that place and would we be going back there and still treating these weeds and things?
I think it's, I mean, I don't, I mean to jump to conclusions, but I think it's, the goal is to meet the requirements of our mitigation plan.
Right.
And if we fulfill all of the requirements of our mitigation plan in five years, then that is supposed to have, demonstrate that the plan, the planting or the changes you made to the ecology are now permanent and you no longer have an obligation to monitor and control those. If I'm wrong, that's-
So whatever happens afterwards with other plants just happens, is that the-
Well, I mean, I think the keeper of that record is Rod and he's saying he's not completely familiar with what that is.
Okay.
Not an expert, but I would, I would say that the trees are mature enough to withstand, to make it through, you know, the blackberry push from, from the creek side.
Competing species.
So basically, nature will take its course in that, you know, we've done what we had to do and we're good.
And it becomes a natural.
You had a comment?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments. One is that I would assume that if, after the five-year commitment, then we don't have the outside resource agencies sort of giving us a scorecard, but, but our staff would want to make sure things are done well and okay, so it might be, there might be some but lesser level of maintenance going on in perpetuity. But I think it's wonderful and my other main comment is I think it's really good that at the staff level you are choosing to find a way to do this and meet the mitigation requirements without using herbicides because I think that's what I was hoping for. And I'm hoping you don't have to come back and ask for herbicides later because I really think that the trade-off is not worth it, at least to me it is not, because the more I found out about the kinds of herbicides and the kind of old science and mostly corporate supplied science on which those herbicides have been approved, the less I feel confident that's a good thing for our wetlands and our Little Lake Valley aquifers, the people that work there, all of that. So I think, I feel, I'm kind of hoping that we would adopt a policy that in the future we simply would not use herbicides, but for the time being, I'm very satisfied that the staff is proceeding basically on that, using mechanical and manual methods as the standard here, which-
And, you know, we'll have to come back to you and it will, just not necessarily if we think there's a need to use herbicides, but just regular updates because we are making a decision at this point to rely solely on mechanical and manual methods and we're going to be monitoring that very closely at the staff level because as Rod said, failure-
It's not an option.
Is not an option. And we are in year three of this year, five-year monitoring plan and so we want to make sure that we're staying, we, right now, I think we're about an 80% success rate, which is where we want to be. So we don't want to backslide on that.
The one other comment that I, I don't know that there's an extensive history yet or experience yet, but I think that solarization, which is, you know, you cut the blackberries down instead of just doing it again the next year and again the next year and instead of applying herbicides, is to use plastic and basically solar, basically fry the roots as well.
Put plastic bags out there.
You put, you put good grade plastic out there, but there has been at least one city that showed that was very effective and only within one year. So you did not have to have multiple applications of herbicides. I'm hoping that that is something you look into.
Well, I would just remind the council that the city has a variety of obligations of vegetation management throughout the community and this, this project out here is, is, is a, you know, the type of thing that we take on, you know, once every 15 years or so. We did a mitigation plan and project when we built the new water, when we built the new Centennial Dam and we did a, I mean, I think we had a little mitigation when we even took a little property down on Railroad Avenue, but, but this was another, you know, major one. But the city owns a lot of right-of-way, the city owns a lot of, you know, place where storm waters need to travel and vegetation management isn't just about unpopular plants that are in a, in a special area. It's about, it's about fire control, it's a lot, a lot of it has to do with, to me, has to do with having defensible space and so I just caution the city that, you know, in, in an instance where you say, well, let's, let's not use herbicides in that deal, I would, I think it has to be a much more complete discussion before it becomes some sort of policy decision at the city that, that they're not going to use those. And I'd like to, this to be interpreted just as for what it is, is that we're going to try it for a year or two and see if we can stay on track with this project to make sure that it, we pass all of our obligations to the resource agencies, but that's, that's my one thought. Holly?
I just had a couple of questions and I apologize if you discussed this before I came in. Thank you for the memo, I think that pretty much explains everything. Just out of curiosity, can we choose to leave blackberries or would that require a change to the mitigation plan? I mean, we all know that blackberries are ridiculously hard to get rid of and I know that they're invasive, but is that an option? To say like, we just, we're choosing to leave them or would that require an amendment to the-
I don't know that would require an amendment, but if we chose to leave the blackberries, I don't think we would be successful in our mitigation effort.
Right, with a competing-
Can you repeat that phrase, Holly?
I said, I don't, I don't think it would require an amendment to leave the blackberries, but I believe if we just left the blackberries alone, we would not be successful in our mitigation.
Right, because it's a, it's a competing species, so they would, I mean-
It grows over the top of the trees and the trees die and our success requirement is 75% survival rate and right now, the last check was 80. If somebody else would like to come up and talk about it.
No, you're doing good. You're doing good.
But, no, I would, I would go back to the, to the bottom line, we, we created 24 acres because we took 18, so we created 24 acres of mitigated wetlands. And at the end of the day, it's, it's our, it's our responsibility to our, our ratepayers to be successful in our mitigation in a cost-effective, cost-effective and a reasonable amount of time. So we, we would endeavor to, to be sure to do that as quickly and as, for the least amount of money as possible, so.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions up here?
Yeah, what you did is create, or what was done was to create a wetland from a non-wetland. And this five-year mitigation plan is to assure that the wetland takes and it, and it becomes a real wetland. Is that, is that in essence the description of what happened here?
Well, if I can give a shot at that, I mean, it is to, it is to change the floral scape of that area to be reflective of plants that are, are representative of a, of a wetland aquaculture. It's not, it's, it's not, you know, and I think it is with native plants. I think on top of that, the goal is that it be native plants and, and non-native plants are not, you know, are not considered part of the natural landscape.
Well, I guess what my, what I was asking for, is this a real wetland that we've created?
Well, we don't have, I mean, that's really beyond the scope of, it doesn't really make any difference anymore. I mean, we-
Well, I have a reason for asking the question.
Well, the thing is, I mean, it's, that's, that was an argument that we should have had 15 years ago, if you wanted to have it.
Can you ask the question?
Can you, you'll have your, your chance to speak if you'd like to speak.
I would like to defer to Jane Valerius. She's our botanist and she have, she was nice enough to come tonight and she would have much, a much, probably a much better and more complete answer for you.
Yeah, I, there's a reason for the question, obviously.
So, I'm not sure, so I'll start with the wetland question.
Yeah. Didn't we create a wetland, a real, if we can look at it and say, this is a wetland?
So, the Armicore definition of a wetland is an area that has a dominance of wetland plants, has wetland soils and wetland hydrology. So you have to have three, these three factors. So you can have seasonal wetlands, which a lot of the wetlands on the wastewater treatment plant are, they're seasonal wetlands. I think a lot of us think wetlands, they think cattail marshes, like the enhancement wetlands on the treatment plant are beautiful examples, right, of a wetland. But seasonal wetlands often don't seem to the eye much of a wetland, but they are, they do meet those three criteria. So when we did the, you know, the Little Lake Valley really is a Little Lake Valley and the majority of the valley, as when we delineated it, or at least the majority of the area on the wastewater treatment plant site turned out to be, to qualify as wetlands. So there were really very few areas that didn't qualify as wetlands and so the city was really, really limited as to where they could create new wetlands. And we looked at watershed, we looked at a lot of different things, areas up, you know, where there might be other opportunities, but we were restricted to what you had on the site. And so the, the concept was to, the areas that weren't meeting the criteria were at a slightly higher elevation and, and so we lowered the elevation and the idea was that then the water would be sitting there and you create kind of like a basin. So we're, the wetlands that have been created out there are meant to look like the other wetlands and they do pretty much. The Little Lake Valley, I will say over the years, because I've been working, you know, doing some of this work out here for, I think since 2000, so 15 years, things have actually had dried out quite a bit in, and I think, you know, part of it is the drought, but the wetland mitigation plan sets forth criteria and it's based on vegetation cover data and that's what I've been doing for the last three years, is going out and measuring the cover and then I matched that up against what the success criteria are set forth in the mitigation plan and at least for these last three years, we have been meeting those success criteria. So as far as the way that we set it up in the plan and as far as the agencies are concerned, the city is meeting the success criteria for wetlands. So yeah, the areas that we, that the city created are meeting the success criteria.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, the reason I asked the question is I've been hearing a lot and we all have that man and woman cannot create wetlands, they are a natural phenomenon. And it sounds to me, what you said, is that indeed you did create wetlands.
Yes, we're meeting the success crit, so once again, there's criteria that were set forth and we're meeting those criteria and that's how, that's how it's being judged.
Would that be, yeah, you did create a wetland?
Yes.
But wetlands by definition are trying to become uplands.
Well, unfortunately, again, here in the Little Lake Valley, because of the sediment deposition, it isn't, it definitely is becoming a problem for, for the, for those areas. Yeah, yeah.
And, and these wetlands that you created will function like natural wetlands, I assume?
Yes, they're meant to function exactly like the existing wetlands that are out there.
Okay. Good, thank you. That clears up a lot of misconceptions that I've been hearing.
Yeah, yeah. And once again, I think it's because, I think it's just because on a visual basis, if you look at them, that, you know, once again, people can see a cat, cattails and toolies and everything like that and, you know, you can see the standing water and you can see, yeah, this is a wetland. But like, if anyone has seen vernal pools, because there's a lot of vernal pools like in, you know, in other areas, you know, in the wintertime, it's easy to identify the vernal pool, it's a, you know, it's a slight depression in a grassland area. In the summertime, you wouldn't even think it was there, you know, the vegetation, everything changes completely, but it is a wetland, it is classified as a wetland.
Getting back to herbicides a little bit, if you do use herbicides as mitigation out there, will you air-bomb it with spray planes or, I'm being facetious. How, how, how in fact would it be applied?
Okay, so once again, in the mitigation plan, the criteria that were set forth were that we would do mechanical as well as chemical control, the herbicide control. So, and what the city has been doing is going in and with the Concrews and with Restoration Resources, been removing the vegetation and then applying herbicide to try to get, you know, to get into the root systems to try to really get the plants from, trying to control them from coming back. Part of the problem is that, you know, the weeds, the different weeds have different flowering seasons and unless you really have someone watching and being out there and, and, and coming at the right season, like right now, unfortunately, I was out today doing the vegetation counts and there's a lot of thistle out there that's already gone to seed. Well, all that seed sits in this, you know, it's actually a very long-term viability. So, you know, doing one, weeding once or weeding twice just doesn't make it. You really have to be on top of the weeding and it's a long-term control. And just to kind of get back to some of the questions, the mitigation plan has a five-year monitoring program and you're right, after five years, if we meet all of our success, if you meet all your success criteria, technically the agencies should sign off on your project. Now, the mitigation plan has a long-term maintenance requirement and that maintenance requirement includes grazing. And I discussed this year with the city to implement grazing because technically the wetland areas are actually five years old, we just didn't start the monitoring until three years ago. So the, the areas are mature enough now and actually beyond mature and could really use grazing as a way of controlling, there's so much vegetation out there now, the thatch is so thick that it's actually harming, you know, it's actually kind of harmful because it's suppressing the vegetation. So if we can get grazing, if we can figure a way to get grazing back out there, and that is part of the long-term management plan for the area, I think one, that'll help tremendously with the weed control, be a very nice, natural way to do it, you don't have to play herbicides.
It makes some ranchers happy.
Yeah, it makes some ranchers happy and, and also provides some fire protection as well. So I'm just going to read this first sentence under long-term management, says grazing, fire management, invasive species control. Grazing and brush clearing have historically been the fire prevention and invasive species control management of choice for the outlet in Mill Creek flood plains. Future grazing and brush clearing in the wetland areas will be, will be managed consistent with the goals of wetland establishment in these areas. Future lease of grazing rights will be adaptive and adjustable based on vegetation monitoring results. So you have, you know, you- So you have, you know, you have the, um, ability here to use that as a, as a control and the Concrews have been very effective. The, the thing is that it really does take, in terms of staff time, um, someone who really stays on top of, you know, be, once again, because the weeds come in different times and different ti- you know, flowering periods, you kind of have to have, be someone aware of, you know, when are they starting to come out? When do they need to be mowed? Before they flower? So, you know, the seeds just don't disperse out. And like I said, they, the seeds, once the seeds are in the soil and they are ready, are, there's, it takes years, you know, before they get depleted. So it is a long-term. The truth is that the weed control is a long-term management.
Jane, um, I was having a conversation with, uh, one of our staff members recently about grazing and, um, you know, goat grazing compared to cattle grazing. And, um, what I was told is the cattle, you know, goats are gonna eat everything and we don't want them eating the plantings that are, that we're trying to be successful with. So do you have a, um, an opinion on what type of grazing would be best?
Um, well, it's interesting because we were talking about it today, um, and, uh, yeah, the goats are great because they will eat anything, including a lot of things that, you know, other animals won't eat. Unfortunately, they will eat everything and, and there are plants that we don't want them to eat. We don't want them to eat the woody riparian plants that we have spent, you guys have spent so much money, time and effort, you know, to get there. So, and apparently they're not so easy to control in terms of fencing. So it's, it's the fact that they're, the management of, uh, you, you really have to have someone there really managing them and make, keeping them out of the riparian. Now, you have to do the same thing, you have to do the same thing with sheep and cattle, but I think it's a little easier with them because you can set up the electric fence and they're more likely to not cross that electric fence line, whereas apparently goats will find a way under, over, you know, and so they're, they're a lot harder to control.
Signage won't work. They don't read too well.
With Jane's done. Um, I, as I mentioned before, I think this was really informative and I agree that a policy would probably be warranted, but I don't feel like we have the staff time right now to, to really get into the level of discussion that we would need to do. I think there is a certain amount of, there's a certain amount of trust factor. You know, staff is aware of the council's views towards herbicides and as has been explained, you're gonna come back to us should there be an additional concern. But at this point, I don't think we have the resources to get into the full policy, let alone go back. I mean, the, this mitigation plan is well underway as, as has been described. So I think it's really great information and it would probably be hoovus to have you back, you know, in, say, a year from now to, to see how things are going. And I'm obviously interested in hearing from the public that's come to speak to this particular issue, but I, I think we should just take the staff's recommendation and report at this point as far as tonight and not take any action.
I'd like to open this up to the public if we can keep this moving along. Do we have anybody from the community like to address this? Please come up and introduce yourself. Try and keep your comments to three or four minutes, please.
Uh, thank you, Brian Weller, local resident. A couple of questions to Jane. What are the criteria? If you could spell those out. And then the second question, I think I heard you say that mechanical means are being preferred to, um, take care of some of the invasive species. And then herbicide will be used to go to the roots. So herbicides would in fact being used. Now, if that is the case, what is the half-life of these herbicides? And if the area is open for grazing, what are the implications of that herbicide residual as far as the, um, the, the cattle are concerned and also the watershed is concerned? And what, um, obviously what kind of herbicides are being used? Could you answer those for us?
Yeah, I'm looking it up. I'm looking up the success criteria. Success criteria have to do with, oh, okay, um, with the percent cover of vegetation of wetland plants.
Jane, I'm afraid I'm gonna have to ask you to come up to the microphone to speak.
Or could we wait and get all the questions up there?
No, well, just take them as they come here. We can get through this.
So the success criteria have to do with the percent cover by plants that are considered to be wetland plants. And the wetland plants, uh, there is a, um, a listing provided by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that gives a status for each plant species. So when I do the vegetation cover data, I, I have a, um, a sample quadrat that I look at and then I estimate the percent cover and it's a visual estimate. Um, and so, um, this is a success criteria. So for seasonal, we have two kinds of wetlands, seasonal wetland, um, and then rush-dominated seasonal wetland. They're both seasonal wetlands, but one has more of this one species, rush species. So the seasonal wetland is 70 to 100% covered by herbaceous wetland plants, mostly fac- to facultative wet species. So there's three categories of wetland plants, facultative, facultative wetland and obligate. And they all have to do with the probability that they occur in wetland areas. Rush-dominated seasonal wetlands have 80 to 100% covered by herbaceous wetlands. So the truth is that we have mostly seasonal wetlands that we've created and not so much of the rush-dominated, but we have been meeting that cover criteria. Um, if I can remember all the questions that you asked.
Herbicides.
Herbicides, yes. We, um, Restoration Resources is the contractor that the city has been using and they have been using Garlon 3A and Roundup Custom for herbicide application. I am not a licensed pest control applicator, so, um, that's why they have Restoration Resources doing that.
So these are being used?
They have been.
They have been used in the past, yes. And as, well, as of, I guess, this year or last year, whenever the last time that, that they went through and did the, the work. But what happens first is they go through and they cut the vegetation, you know, to really, um, to get it to, well, hopefully to do a lot of different things. One, they try to get rid of the seeds and then also to, um, make it easier, you know, to make the application. And the application is very, um, it's not broadcast, they don't, you know, they don't spray in a broadcast area because there are plants that we don't want impacted. So it's a very applied application to the weed that we're targeting, which is mostly like full thistle, poison hemlock, um, blackberry, Himalayan blackberry, um, we have some clam of weed out there. So the really invasive, uh, plant species are the ones that-
It's targeted.
It's targeted.
And what's the half-life of the, these herbicides like rather?
I'm, I'd have to look it up. I'd have to look it up. I don't know off the top of my head.
Have you come across this before?
Come across-
The use of herbicides?
Yes, yes. It's pretty much universally used. I, I mean, every, pretty much every project I've ever worked on herbicide application is, is allowed. Yes, I guess. I, I will say for one, there, I had one project in Marin County where they didn't allow use of herbicides.
Thank you, Jane. Do you, do you have, your time about used up. Do you have any other questions you need answered? I'd like, no, you, you, you're welcome to sit down.
Just the impact on, on the-
I don't, I, she's, I don't know if she would profess to be an expert on that.
No, and they're not, you don't have, they're not, currently not grazing out there.
Do we have any other public comments?
Hi, I am Cynthia Riser-Jennings and, um, thank you so much for all this discussion and the opportunity to speak on herbicides. There we go. My computer's feeling a little overloaded, just one moment here. So I prepared a little talk about glyphosate. Dr. Anthony Samsel is an expert research scientist who is passionate about farming, gardening and agriculture. He has also done contract work for the EPA and as a hazardous materials expert, he has worked for the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the United States Navy and the U.S. Coast Guard. Besides his career in science, he has also owned and operated several farms in New England and it was his firsthand experience that led him to begin investigating the effects of glyphosate in the first place. Here's a quote for him, from him. "I started using glyphosate myself commercially around the farm and my properties back in the late 70s or 80s when it first came to the market," he says. "I believed the hype like all the other farmers and people around the world do, that glyphosate is as safe as salt and it broke down into harmless chemicals that did no harm. I believed all that stuff until I started studying the chemical when I became sick from using it. Being a research scientist, a chemist, um, and a chemist, I knew what to look for. Having worked in public health, I was familiar with how chemicals had effects on the human body and on animals, so I started approaching it from that aspect." I asked the EPA as a research scientist to be able to access the documents, um, that they used in their approval process, um, for his own research. "I was denied by the Environmental Protection Agency initially," he said. Eventually he gained access to the pertinent papers and he found that Monsanto knew in 1981 that glyphosate caused adenomas and carcinomas in the rats that they've studied. "The highest incidence of tumorogenic growth occurred in the pituitary gland, specifically pituitary kidney, breast, testicular, thyroid tumor, tumors and thymic hyperplasia. Because what I have seen in those documents, it clearly shows that Monsanto knew in 1981 that glyphosate caused tumorogenic growth and carcinomas in multiple organs and tissues. At the rate we're going, using these chemicals so widely in our environment and our food, we are going to kill billions of people," Dr. Samsel says. "In a very important study conducted by the World Health Organization's International Agency for Research on Cancer, data was analyzed from studies that have been conducted on glyphosate over the past several decades. The results were sobering and now whole countries are banning Roundup and glyphosate because of the disastrous health effects this chemical is having on people and the environment. The Netherlands, France, Brazil, Sri Lanka, Bermuda are all following the lead of the World Health Organization and credible medical journals today such as the Lancet Oncology in determining that glyphosate, the main ingredient in Monsanto's Roundup pesticide, is probably carcinogenic to humans."
Cynthia, are you about close to running on that?
I am close. I have two small paragraphs. Thank you. "I understand that it may cost more not to use herbicides. This is important to realize. However, it is also important to realize that this is a short-term cost consideration. The long-term cost question is what is the cost of sick people, of sick loved ones, both now and far into the future? Poison is poison. Glyphosate or Roundup is clearly poison and all use of this poison by the city of Willets and our precious environment, especially on wetlands, should be stopped. Our health and the future health of our land and people depends on you, our city council, making this wise decision now." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else to address council?
Freddie Long, Willets. I just, I, I now have a question because I'm a little bit confused that Ron said, yeah, you made a statement that you're not gonna use herbicides anytime from now on till it's deemed necessary.
Unless we absolutely-
What? Unless you have to, you're gonna come back and talk to us, talk to us. Okay. But then, I'm sorry, I don't know. Yeah, thank you for your report. It was very informative. But then I got the impression that you are gonna be using. Is that, did I miss something?
No, just they have been using them to this point.
Okay, okay. But, okay, thank you for clarifying. That's, that's my question.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else this evening?
My name is Tim Rice. Okay, this, use of herbicides kind of puzzles me. So, you know, what is herbicide? Well, you know, it's poison, okay? We put poison on the land to kill plants and I know it rains in this area, so it's gonna get into the water and maybe wash downstream, maybe some get in the aquifer. Some water will evaporate, so it'll be in the air. Um, I don't know about you, but, you know, air's really important to me. Try holding my breath, I can't make it important, you know, a minute or so. You know, air's important. Water, I can't do without water. Won't last but a few days. The soil, I mean, that's where our food comes from. So, you know, this is, this is our life support system, air, soil and water. I've heard the term standard, standard practice. And some might say, well, it's legal. Well, gosh, you know, slavery used to be legal too. It wasn't right. You know, women were considered property. I mean, that was the law of the day a hundred years ago. That wasn't right. Back in World War II, everything Hitler did in his country was legal, you know? So legal isn't good enough. So my question is, by what standard is it okay to poison our life support system? Thank you.
Thank you. Any else? Okay, well, I think that we wrapped this item up. I think that the direction was stated by the public horse director, what practice is gonna be moving forward. And it's not a specific item with someone here. And it's not agendized to be an action item. I think we've heard from the community, I think all the council members have weighed in, so I think we will move on to the department recommendations. Anything from the city clerk?
Yes, I apologize for the time that you're having today. This month was kind of hectic.
Well, you do have an excuse this month.
Yeah, but I still should have had them together. So I will have them all in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anything from finance? Public safety chief?
Excuse me.
That's okay. Yeah, I just wanted to report that our own Jake Donahue just got back. He and Chris Wilks went off to the incident response to terrorist bombing school at New Mexico Tech Energetic Materials Research Testing Center, which is at New Mexico Tech. It's a grant-funded both airfare per diem, hotel and flight there, et cetera. For both of them, they head on over there. In light of our little incident here, we've, the fire chief and I found this grant and I actually sent someone before years ago, but it brought back a lot of good information and they actually became instructors out of this. And they're not bomb technicians, but they've learned a lot to bring back, so if you get a chance to ask either of those gentlemen some questions, they'll, they brought back some videos and some cool stories. Just kind of a reminder, school's in session for the television audience, so please slow down around the schools. We've been, we see a lot of police officers near the schools. All the massive amounts of police officers we have will be deployed at any one time. But, um, we are stopping folks also for Blaster Lane, everybody. It's kind of a madhouse. I apologize, the city did not put the school there, the school put itself there and, uh, years ago predates me as chief, but, uh, parking is hard there and when people park in the red zone, it narrows the traffic there and then people don't pay attention to the kids and parents crossing there. So I just kind of put it out to the community, slow down around the schools and get there plenty of time to drop off and pick up your child so you're not in a hurry. I wanna kind of let you know that I'm, we're bidding farewell to one of our officers. Matthew Sidzik is leaving us for the city of Redwood City. Matt's been here about about four years and, in fact, he even bought a home here and he's heading down there for greener pastures and he will be missed. He's a good officer, one of my bilingual guys fluent in Russian. So, and then lastly, I kind of, I know it's kind of hard because we've been doing 90-degree weather lately, but they're forecasting El Nino weather and, you know, I, I look back and Jeff Smith, when I used to talk to him, we, we talked about, the community needs to prepare itself for wet weather, fires, et cetera, and have plans of action of what they're gonna do and, um, it's not up to government totally to, to take care of them and they need to do some pre-planning ahead of time. So people need to start winterizing their homes and if it floods, where it normally floods in town, I mean, it usually it floods and water comes up high and comes down quick, but, uh, people need to do some planning ahead of time. I, I always kind of think when it's pouring like buckets, we have the sandbag station up here and I don't think you're gonna shovel enough sandbags to make a difference when- when it's coming down like cats and dogs. So I think people kind of need to plan on that, we're kind of looking at our emergency plan right now, and I think, again, it's kind of an ironic time to put it out, but I figure, I don't want to be in I told you so mode, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Yeah, Larry?
Perry, I want to thank you for the police officers at the school. It's really nice to see them there. Thank you very much.
Jerry?
Thank you, officers.
You might not be the right person, but since you brought it up about the storm, the city should probably be, I mean, we're being proactive on city-owned property, but I'm wondering if we could develop some kind of a program for the public. You know, you mentioned a few things, but I think it's got to be maybe formulated a little more, so people know what to do, do you think?
And that's why we're going to be meeting here in the next couple of weeks to start.
And, and you've got a flood plain administrator that's going out to get some excellent training, I don't think they take us thunder, but that'll give us some ideas, at least with FEMA and any of the other folks that tell us where it floods.
Well, the FEMA's.
Yeah, so.
All right, thanks, Jerry.
I had one comment on.
Yeah.
I guess John Sherman's going to be off learning about flood control issues during September, and that's when we might have flood problems, although I don't know when, you know, we can't predict exactly when that's going to happen, but I hope that we have backup plans for, while you're away.
I have no control over FEMA schedules.
Or, or over the rains, if you think that, yeah.
So part of our emergency operations plan that we're underway with trying to get updated is, is to prepare for any of these types of events, whether it be earthquake or flood or any fire, and everybody at the city, especially the management staff, has a, has a specific role in, in those types of events, and it includes our partners at the county level and regional OES and at the state level. So we, we are conversing with the county folks about this already, and we'll, you know, we're going to do our best to be as fully prepared as we can.
But there will be information for the public to take their own actions.
Makes, it's a little bit ironic that most of the mitigation is to promote flooding, and here we, now we put on our other hat and we want to stop flooding.
No, it's not to promote flooding, it's to, from our wetlands which absorb flood waters.
Can I, just on, as a related topic, I have been contacted by some residents that have flooded in the past, and they're concerned about the impact of city properties on their flooding, and staff is looking into it, and we're, the problem with waterways is that there are many overlapping jurisdictions, and the city can't just unilaterally go out and say dredge a trench or whatever, you know, so we are working on that, and I just want those residents to know that staff is looking into it.
We do have the updated flood maps, don't we? Oh, really?
And you're not going to be happy when you see it like that. As you better get ready for some new insurance rates. Okay, let's see, I think we've covered that. Community development, do you have anything to add under that topic? Public Works and Engineering, you pretty well whipped, you look pretty well whipped there.
Good job.
The only thing I would add, Humboldt Street, we're just waiting for the final punch list to go through and do cleanup, have a few little items, and that project is completed. Same with emergency water, we're scheduling the final inspection for some time next week, it'll depend on when the inspector can make it up here from Santa Rosa. She said either next week or the following week, but that project, it's about time for barbecue and, it's over. And I'm probably forgetting something.
Della Avenue.
Well, Della Avenue, we're, yeah. We're done with that one, and moving on to some sewer-related projects, and Main Street planning is coming up, and preparing for the wintertime. Think they'll have to redo their maps when they consider how much dirt's been moved from there to there when FEMA comes out and surveys again, but, I don't know, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And I've only heard positive comments on Humboldt, I mean, everyone has been really happy with how that turned out, including the business owners that border the alley.
Okay, I think we can move on to council member and committee reports.
Meet Monday.
Lafto?
Did not meet.
MTA?
MTA is meeting tomorrow in Point Arena, and it's my birthday, I'm not going to go. Here, here.
Emso, I met last weekend. Well, the only thing of note was, when we were negotiating with solid waste for a new plan, one of the things that we were talking about was the organic, mixed organics, and we added that into the contract. And we were kind of skirting around the issue of working with Cold Creek because we didn't want to be in a position of telling solid waste that they had to use Cold Creek, but they did, in fact, make a contract with them. One of the things that was going on at that time was Sonoma County had a landfill, and located on top of the landfill was a, a composting facility, and they had some issues with that. It was leaking into the creek, and it was ordered to shut down, and, you know, there were things were going on there. So there was a concern that we really needed to lock in with Cold Creek to get the capacity before Sonoma County came down and grabbed it all, and we wouldn't have anything left. Well, as it turned out, that didn't happen. Sonoma County has found all kinds of other places to send their organic waste, so this whole emergency issue is not there, and things are going along fairly well, other than that.
Thought you were going to want to bring it back up, and we can do it again. EDFC?
Yes, EDFC met on August 13, and the most interesting part of it was that we had a presentation from the Mendo Wool Project, and they have already received approval from Ukiah for a location for a wool processing plant there, and have their permit, and they are seeking funding through this local investing opportunity that I've been talking about for a while, so that we're really encouraging anybody who has extra money sitting in the bank getting basically zero percent return to invest in the EDFC's program, and that is going to be targeting this wool processing plant as one of the major, you know, economic engines, I guess you'd call it. It's going to benefit not only because it's in Ukiah, it'll benefit Ukiah, but all of the sheep growers and so forth, and ranchers in our area should, should benefit, and keeping that money and those jobs local is great. There's also the biochar experiment that has already been taking place, has been very successful, and they're looking for entrepreneurs who would take it to a more commercial level, and so far we haven't, you know, that hasn't happened yet, but they're looking for that. And the third very interesting thing is that we're, EDFC is sort of embarking on an entrepreneur hub, and EDFC will be locating in a new place, which is at the Methodist Church in Ukiah, the adjoining building, not the church building itself, and is seeking any entrepreneurs who would like to look for a cowork space where there would be that kind of synergy with other, other people and support systems for startup businesses in particular. So things are happening there, and I, I'm planning to have a gathering for potential investors to find out more about this local investing opportunity, probably in late September or early October, and I'll keep you posted.
All right. Good. League of California Cities.
Did not meet.
Water and wastewater, they had a report, I think, about our water meeting yesterday with the one-stop shop, so.
Is it the state water?
State water, yeah, we talked about that a little, I'll fill you in soon. A nice meeting. I think we learned some of the proper buzzwords to use and some of the improper buzzwords not to use in order.
Don't use this if you want your permit to go through.
Yeah, exactly. Revine Ed, I think there is something scheduled for that now, is that right?
Two minutes, second.
And Finance has not met, ad hoc. We have an ad hoc meeting coming up.
On the first, I think.
Next Tuesday, September 1st.
Yeah, I was, I had some notes, I don't think I sent them off yet today.
And so that agenda will be published on Friday.
So any council member reports or recommendations?
Yes.
Sure.
I'm concerned with the water that is supposedly going to come about one bay in the bridge down by the library that is plugged, that Fish and Game will not let us go in and clear it out to write a letter to them saying that we really feel that it's very important that we go in and clean it out so that the water will pass through without flooding that area.
Is it vegetation filled or trash filled?
No, it's just rock.
Rock, okay.
And I would really like to have the city write a letter to them saying that, you know, it's a great concern because everybody that is, you know, on that side is going to get flooded.
I think we can see that happens through the Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Yeah, about, I think last year, the year before, the council voted to approve the development of a care facility in Hale Creek, it was like a 24, 28-bed facility, and obviously it hasn't happened. And just the other day, Elizabeth Santos, who was behind the development of it, she stopped me at the mailbox, and she apologized, she wanted me to pass on the message to the council that she apologizes for not being able to make this thing happen, you know, the finances just weren't there, and she really feels bad about it, and she wanted me to say personally how bad she felt.
This is sort of a two-for-it's-a-council report and the good and welfare. The word is getting out, and I'm sure all the council members know already about the grand opening ceremony that's going to be for the new hospital. I think we're all very excited about that going forward, which I believe is September 13th, it's a Sunday, so I, I imagine it's going to be a really good turnout, and, you know, the city council was at the groundbreaking of the hospital, we've got the golden shovel in there, in our trophy case, and so it's going to be really exciting to, to see that finally open.
Yes.
They aren't actually starting to see patients there yet, but.
They don't move until, or it's, yeah, is the public, but the ceremony is in.
So I had the opportunity last weekend, or I guess it was two weeks ago now, to select an honoree for the Leightonville's Old Timers baseball game, one of the coveted positions. And I selected Larry Stransky to be the Old Timer of the Year this year, and, you know, which, I really, it was fun, I mean, it was fun to go up there with Larry, number one, but, but I learned a couple things about Larry that I, and I thought I knew everything there was to know about. But, number one, and, and you may hear this again this weekend, but number one, you can always tell whose Larry's students were, because they all address him as Mr. Stransky. And still, you know, and I think, thinking back to it, I think I addressed him that way until we were cohorts here on the council, I always address him that way too, so, but, but he has a tremendous network of friends and acquaintances out there that rival anybody that I have ever walked around town or between two communities with. So, I mean, he was, was a, it was fun to go up there, and it was fun to see him palling around with a bunch of old students and old friends up there, so that was a fun little day. And we won in extra innings, extra innings.
Nine to seven. I told them we were going to win.
We did, we did, we both told them.
It's a big deal, yeah.
Anyway, thank you very much for the call, Bruce, it was very nice, and, and it's interesting that, to talk to the young people that I can remember back in high school that were, you know.
That are now old timers.
That are now old timers.
Let's be clear that they lowered it to like 35, I think it is, so it's like, yeah, so I'm officially an old timer as well.
Yeah, it was fun, and I learned a lot about washing machines too that I didn't.
Yeah, we did, we learned a heck of a lot about washing machines. So anyway, any other good and welfare? We have personnel, an additional item, we have.
Close session item.
Close session item, anticipated litigation that we added to the agenda, and then we have conference on our labor negotiations. Any votes that are taken in there, decisions that are made will be reported out into this room immediately subsequent to that meeting, so. Thank you for joining us tonight.